And switch your microphone with Frank since he'll be asking the questions. Too late.
We come down here for a lot of it.
Is it green?
It is green.
It's green. All right, so we're going to call this special meeting of the Northern City Council to session. It is Monday, July 11th, 2022, and it's 4:05 PM. And we are starting with a request for council action to approve the appointment of election judges for the 2022 primary and general elections. We have the RCA in front of you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
Should we do roll call first?
Oh, yes, that would be good. Frank, would you please call roll?
Mayor Pilon.
Here.
Councilmember Alders.
Here.
Councilmember Blake.
Here.
Councilmember Greenberg.
Here.
Councilmember Rainville.
Present.
All right, and we are going to forego the pledge of allegiance. The purpose of this meeting is to address the request for council action on the appointment of our election judges for the coming two elections, and then to conduct the first two of our five interviews of our finalists for the city administrator position. And so with that being said, I will ask if there's any questions on the resolution and the request for council action on the election judges. And I'll just say for the record, the recommendations here are Pamela Beckman, Amy Buffy, Teresa Butterfield, Paula Coffey, Mary Ellen Durcott, Theresa Tess Whitebeetle, Denise Elfelt, Ken Glazer, Alexis Lexi Johnson, Chad Johnson, Roy Johnson, Jeanne Schiller, Michelle Lowe, Teresa Terry Miller, Rhonda Mix, Mary Rainville, Helen Rusted, Carson Stadl, Kim Taggart, Michael Wayman, Lori Welber, and Tony Elfelt.
Ken, oh, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Blake.
So Mary can be an election judge?
Long as she's not running for office. Anybody who's not, not on the ballot can be.
Oh.
And Mr. Mayor.
Or family members.
Okay. And Mr. Mayor, and just to clarify, this is just for the August primary where the city offices are not on the ballot. I will not be submitting my name to be in the November election. As an election judge, I have every right to be because I am not on the ballot, nor are any of my relatives, but I feel it would be a conflict or could be perceived as a conflict, so I'm only doing the primary, which does not have our council.
Okay, I was just curious, I didn't know, I thought we were out because we were on the council, I just assumed that, okay.
The, and so there's one title then in the title of the issue because it also says for the general elections. Whereas two elections take place, so this is stated for those. So that list I just read minus Mary Rainville would be the same list for the November election.
Okay.
Any other questions? Saying, hearing none, I will accept a motion to approve this request and resolution.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution approving the appointment of election judges for the 2022 primary and general election as, as discussed.
Motion from Councilmember Alders, we have a second.
Second.
Second from Councilmember Greenberg. Any other discussion or questions? Saying and hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right, so that completes the first item on the agenda. Now, as we all see, you met Bob, he's up first, so we have 19 questions, the last one being his questions for us. You have a place to write notes on the question sheet, you also have a form here where you can take notes on the rating form, you've got nine items here identifying different categories you may be wanting to make notes on. As far as communication skills, creative ideas, innovation, vision for the position, research on the organization in our community, clear understanding of the position, theoretical knowledge of the position, teamwork and interpersonal skills. So those will be along with the questions that we have here. Pat's going to watch the time, and if we're running a little long, he'll move us along to make sure that questions all get through, so the important one at the end, he can ask us a question. Anything before we start? Frank will be reading the questions and we'll be taking notes. Okay?
Bad news, he left.
Yeah, he gets air waiting.
Pat, could you shut that door, please?
Yes.
Get the sun. Sorry for the delay, Bob, we had one little council item we had to take care of first. And since we had a special meeting, we threw it in, so.
Just a question, Mayor, do you want the door shut for that? That isn't going to pose any problems with open meetings, is it?
No, people can still walk in, it's just, I get migraines if the sun hits wrong.
Okay, okay.
The sun, I thought it was to keep the air in.
I heard a little bit about your election process and your judges, and it sounds like things are in hand and, and can be, to be congratulated because you're right on top of it.
Well, tell that to Natalie.
Well, I talked to Natalie about it, Adrian, and they're, they seem to have it on hand, so that's great. I mean, there's a, there's a lot.
There's a lot to it.
There sure is, I know that, I was trained some years ago as, as the head election judge for a while, and, and there's a lot of detail and the classes, so you need lots of coffee for those classes.
Yeah, I've got it too.
Oh, have you?
Yes, I need coffee.
All right, so what we're going to do, we have 18 questions, and then our last question really is we give it to you to ask us a question. We've planned an hour for this, we're about 10 minutes into our hour here, we've got a buffer between, so we should be okay, but if we, if we start getting long here, Pat's our, our timekeeper, and he'll get us to move along. Frank, our interim administrator, Frank Boils, is going to be asking the questions.
Okay.
And if we, if we look like we're busy writing, that's a good thing, we're not ignoring you, but we're listening, so.
Okay.
So I'd like you to be relaxed and take what you feel is appropriate to give a, as thorough an answer as, as you would like, but understand we do try to keep it to an hour.
We have 18 questions, that's quite a few.
Yes, that is.
Right.
Bob, let's start, this is a two-part question, actually. Please tell us what interests you about the now-then administrator position, part one. Part two, highlight the key qualifications that make you the best person for the job.
It's a big question, I could, I could take 20 minutes on that one, but it won't, so. But what interests me is that the opportunity here and now then actually is very similar, it's like a combination of some of the broad-based experiences I have. I work very well in situations where I work to collaborate with individuals, with staff, committees and council members, and, and individual businesses, business individuals are people who want to get things done. And I've done that in my work in, especially in my economic development work where I've formed, I'll call them strategic alliances with an individual that might want to accomplish things, they might want to build a building, and they just need to be shown the ropes to be able to do it. They don't really care about that extra $1,000, so they're concerned about getting it done and finding the best, most efficient and effective way to do it. And I help bring those people to accomplish their goals, that's what I did a lot in my past. Then my work was very much working in the capital improvement items that, that basically very similar where a supervisor might want to accomplish the reconstruction of a sewer or a water main or, or a street, usually it's a street, they're more concerned about the street than the airwatts underneath. You don't have to worry about that in this case. But that's also another area that I am knowledgeable about, and that's rural development where you use septics, whether it's a conventional or it's a mound system, or maybe it doesn't perk at all and you have to, well, I don't know, I don't know that you really want to go with a tank, but at times for temporary situations that does occur. But, so my, my experience is really very broad-based, and it works with individuals to accomplish their objectives. I want to continue just a bit on this particular question because it's kind of a key pivotal one I wanted to make sure to cover, is that broad-based experience. And so one of the things like, that I've done in, in Princeton was the collaboration for establishment of a destination, a destination for people to come to the town too. And in Princeton, it happened to be the Rum River where there was a park, but it was underdeveloped, or I would say that it hadn't had any new investment, but yet there was a lot of community talk about doing things there, or making it better, or, you know, there was a very large, grandiose idea that was like a, a type of pavilion-type thing where there would be a band shelf. There were some issues with floodplain, and there was a lot of friction prior to me getting there, but yet hearing their ideas, there's a lot of good ideas. So in time, what I worked to do is pull out the ideas, and one of them was a fishing pier, so I worked with the Rotary, which I was a member of, and we got a grant, a small little grant to put up a $10,000 fishing pier. It was a very nice, say, momentum-building project, and then we were able to get an outfitter through a little grant that we also got to get an outfitter to do canoe rides and kayaks and things like that, city got into that. And it was just a lot of collaboration amongst the steps, and then eventually it led to a $500,000 investment into the park, into the parklands to have camping and canoeing and, and other improvements in the park. So it's the collaboration, finding the areas that people want to get things done, and then letting them know the methods in which it can be done. But it takes collaboration with a lot of different people. The council is certainly important that they're aware of some of this collaboration that's going on. In the end, the council, oftentimes, there's a, an approval of some type. So I've worked with committees and councils for many years, 20-plus years, and I think I do it fairly well, I'm pretty direct, I'm direct, I'm open, I like to talk to a lot of different people, I get along with a lot of different people, and I like to accomplish things, so.
Anything particularly about now-then?
About now-then?
Yeah, what's unique about now-then to you that brings you?
Well, you see, what's unique is, see, I grew, this is a part that's kind of like my history, is I grew up in Milwaukee in a metro area, and this is kind of like outside the metro area, but I've been working in small towns ever since, ever since I graduated from college practically. And to, to me, this is like the pinnacle of the rural community because it's, as I'm coming up here, passing by all these great-looking barns and farms, it's really pretty, it's picturesque here, and I think that there's a lot that can be captured. I think that there's places for, for all types of development and all ways of life, and I think that what you're working to develop, that large lot rural, you know, the five acres plus, there's a good place for it, and I think you're in the, right in the midway spot between, you know, the metro area and say the outskirts, some of the smaller actual towns like Princeton or Anoka or things like that.
Question two. Please describe your supervisory and management style and how that style facilitates teamwork among the council, the staff, and our contracted employees.
Okay, great, well, big question again. So what I like to do is work with individuals that like to get things done and like to take care of their business. I like it so that, so that my style was working with the supervisors, first of all, to have an open door so that they feel comfortable talking to me, telling me what their ideas are, what their directions are, and then helping them discuss the pros and cons of the direction they like to go. Maybe I'll agree with it, maybe I won't agree with it, but what's important is what, what their thoughts are, because if they want to accomplish something, if a supervisor in your public works department feels that this is the right thing to do, he's going to probably figure out the best way to get it done, and if it's the right thing to do according to what the council says, that, then, that's great, that's a win-win because he, he's motivated to get, to accomplish it. Sometimes, though, there needs to be some, say, course correction, and you need to talk through those course corrections, and that's what I also like to do and enjoy doing, and that is helping people see both sides of, of, of an issue. Sometimes it's, it's like commonly said, there's two sides to everything, and I think that good discussion will bring out those, and then you have to weigh the alternative. I'm all for open discussions, sometimes, sometimes the supervisors are involved, sometimes not, it just all depends on the issues and, and how passionate people are. I like it when people are passionate because that means it's important to them. And, and you know, I think if we can bring our passions to work, that's great, this happens to be my passion, is working in the public sector. I think it's a great career. I didn't quite get to your question, if you want to, could you repeat the second half of that?
The second half?
Yeah.
How does it facilitate teamwork among council staff and contracted employees?
So in my few minutes that I had to meet with our dean and Natalie, I could just give you a couple examples of, right there is, is just hearing what their thoughts on their work environment and, and how they like to do what they're doing and how they're doing it. I mean, it sounds like that there's some flexibility in being able to help them work the way they like to work, you know, and to break out steps in accomplishing their objectives, and I just think that's really good. I think that they are open to being able to sit down and go over what they're working on, how they're working it, and then make adjustments if it's appropriate, that's just a great staff, and that's how you facilitate teamwork, and that is by having those dialogues. I like to do them individually, and I like to do them as groups. And that would especially be important with the council, as well as with the planning commission. I, I think I'd need to hear more about the, the development goals, I know you're working on covenants and things like that, or not covenants, but some of the, well, maybe there are covenants, I don't know if there's zoning or if it's covenants, I'm not real familiar with how you're setting those up, but I'm familiar with both of those tools as well.
Question three. Please share examples of staff and coworkers that you have supervised or influenced that advanced in your organization or somewhere else, and the role you played in assisting them to be more successful.
Well, an example that I'll give is, my area was community development and planning, so when I was in Princeton, there was, there was not a development director or planner there, and basically, so planning went to one of the, the office staff, kind of like, I guess it would be Natalie in this particular case, but, or was it our dean? I think it's our dean, actually, who does some of the.
Adrian?
Adrian, yeah, who does some of the planning work. But going back to, to, again, Princeton and the development director, so she was fairly new in development, but I tried to show her the ropes on how, how you work with an industry and an individual to help them consider expansion and work with some of the programs for grants, because there's a lot of different funding mechanisms out there. I mentioned the Riverside Park where there was a destination, there was a DNR grant there to obtain that half a million dollars, had a match, of course, but there was a, a grant process to get through there, and we met jointly with the DNR staff to help them understand what directions were being considered and discussed, and he liked them, and we also took his feedback and, and implemented or integrated them into the application, and that became the application which was funded, and then it was implemented. So those steps, if someone's not familiar with it, they don't know those steps, but yet I'm very familiar with them, I've done many types of ones from DOT to DNR to, to DED, I've done a lot of different types of grant applications and worked in implementing them too. And I think bringing about the cohesiveness in the direction that's being pursued, because it takes them quite a while to get through an idea to actually put it in place, to apply for the funds, I mean, that could take a year in itself, it might take you a year and a half before you finally, oh, you got the money, so now you're going to be doing it. And it takes a while to, to initiate the idea, because it's a shared idea or it doesn't happen, you know, it just doesn't happen. It needs, everything needs to be discussed, considered, and, and moved forward in some form or manner, and that particular person, I actually can't think her name right now, but that was a person that certainly was influenced there. Another example would be, when I came into Princeton, there was the idea of having a cell tower, and the cell tower was going to be put up by AT&amp;T and then owned by the city, and they were going to have, they had a, they have a long-term contract to, to utilize that, but there's two, possibly three other spots that could be, say, sold off or rented off to produce income on that tower. That was a, an idea that the fire chief and police chief had in Princeton, and that was implemented as well. And to, to a large degree, they end up, they being the supervisors, end up being the main advocate for their ideas, and, and I helped maybe shape them a little bit different so that they're just maybe a little bit more publicly orientated or, and committee orientated so that the values can come out sometimes. Sometimes there's discussion about how it's going, going to be funded that creates, you know, questions. There's big spending areas in police and fire, and they, they don't always necessarily have the budget in mind, so you have to kind of buffer some of those discussions and to, and to keep those in mind so that it moves forward, so.
Question four. Please describe, describe a team that you have led or a team that you've led on a particular task, but things didn't work. What did you do to make the team successful after this initial lack of success?
Well, I'm going to go to a project that I think that basically failed, and that was a project where there was going to be a, this just goes back to New Richmond where I was working in development, and there was a project that the city had an old, old, quite old factory, basically, that was donated to them and being used as an incubator, and there was a developer who wanted to put a multifamily housing project on that particular site. This had quite a bit of support from the council, it had quite a bit of support from, say, the downtown in New Richmond, but there was the neighborhood that was nearby and somewhat adjacent as well, that really didn't like the idea. And I think what I learned there is the importance of trying to bring the views, bring all the views to the table into the discussion at the time the decisions are being made, because even though there's a lot of discussion beforehand, if the, if the parties that, say, support or object to the idea aren't at the meeting, then it doesn't have a fair hearing, so to speak, a fair understanding of the pros and cons to it. And that particular one failed, and, and I wasn't able to bring it back forward. Another project in New Richmond was a, I just have to go on because that was a failure. Was a success where we had the same, a similar situation, but it was a redevelopment where Nash Finch wanted to purchase the local grocery store and reinvest into it, I think it was $4 million if I'm not mistaken, and they wanted to build quite a large footprint, and it was going to imprint, it was going to knock out five houses, which was pretty significant invasive action. So that also didn't go too well in the hearing, but what we were able to do is regroup and resize the project where they built, they made the 20,000 a 40,000 square foot building, so we resized it, and they decreased the, the size of the parking lot, the imprint there, and we're, and it came forward again, and it was successful in moving forward, and the neighborhood actually was very happy, and it actually, today it looks very good, it was a good investment for the community. So I guess I've had, and I've had numerous types of public hearings and processes that I've been through and involved with, and, and know very well that these hearings are very personal to the individuals that come forward to those meetings, and as well to the businesses that want them or, and the councils.
Question five. Some councils are more involved in day-to-day affairs. How would you manage this situation to the city's best interests?
I encourage the council to talk to me when there's issues that come up, if they want to talk about whatever the park mowing, or if it be an issue that's coming up, approval of a subdivision, I'd like to be able to hear those ideas, it'd be great to hear them ahead of time, or at the meetings, but ahead of time, then I can give it some thought before the meeting, and I like that, that things need to be aired out at the public meetings, so, be it the city council meeting or a plan commission meeting, because that's where the decisions come. And like I had said earlier, I think it's important that the pros and cons come out at that meeting. My door is open, and I would encourage council members to come and talk to me.
Thank you. Number six. How have your work actions benefited previous employers? How have your work actions benefited previous employers?
Well, as I see, the city administrator really is here to be able to work with the city council and have smoother government processes, and I think that I bring that to the council. I also bring the experience to be able to accomplish goals if there's particular objectives that the council, strategic directions the council wants to go in or move towards. I've done that in every city I've been in, and I could list probably 12 items or so that I've been able to accomplish in Princeton while I was there, working with the supervisors there. Some of them are, to more credit to the supervisors, some of them, I feel, are initiatives that I was able to take off the back burner for the city and move them forward and getting, getting them done. So I couldn't name numerous projects, and I'd be happy to do that, but I don't know if I can today.
Number seven. Describe a controversial situation that you were part of which involved public scrutiny and media attention. How did you handle the situation? What was the outcome?
Well, this is a really good example because it's probably a case of where a mayor, in this particular case, and an alderman who really felt that the police department was overstepping their bounds and, and providing tickets on Highway 23, as it was, and just at the edge of town, and they felt that they shouldn't be getting their buddies' tickets. And I think that after a number of sessions with the councilperson and the mayor and hearing their thoughts on the issues, I thought that it was time for, not only for me to be talking to the, to the police chief, which I was, but to bring it forward in the, in the fashion of a, a council discussion about the duties of the police force and what directions they should be going on. This was one of maybe a six or nine points that were covered, and it became the consensus of the council that, that the patrolling, as it was taking place, was the correct direction to go. Now, that wasn't necessarily to a consensus, but yet it, it was, I'm sorry, it was a consensus of the council, but it wasn't necessarily in agreement with that particular mayor. So that's an example of a situation where, where there was controversy, there was coverage, and, and we moved forward.
Okay. Question eight. Describe how you believe the relationship between the city administrator and city council should function.
Thank you. Okay, so we're almost halfway. So I think that the way I'd like to see the council work is to, to work on what directions they feel that the city should, should be moving in. If there's strategic directions that the city should be going in, goals or objectives, if there's, and some of those strategic directions might be on how the city hall's running, but yet I think that there's a certain area where, where the council needs to be looking at policies and not getting too involved in how a particular product is delivered. Permits are issued, as long as they get done efficiently, effectively, and, and correctly, that's important. I think there needs to be sun and anonymity about how the job gets done, but I think policies are appropriate for being at the city council, and especially objectives, and then allowing us some time to be able to figure out how to get those objectives accomplished. I actually take a lot of input too, so I, I mean, I'm very, I like to see council members' ideas, and I like to see the ideas of others too, and then weigh the options. I think you'd find me very responsive.
Okey-dokey. Question nine. Please describe your involvement in the budgeting and financial process of your organizations, as well as your experience with long-range financial planning.
These are big questions, I suppose. It's a big job. Well, back to my strength really is my diversity of experience, I just want to say that, though, okay, but let me answer the question. So my experience really, I started out, like I was saying, I got really deep involved in community development and got into the capital improvement planning of the city of New Richmond. I was working on projects there that I didn't necessarily know how that road is built, although I had an engineering class, but that's about what I knew. And, and then I said, well, hey, we ought to be able, able to get some grant for this road here, and here's how you do it. And then I, so they started putting me more involved in these capital improvement projects, and that's where I got my start into budgeting. It got from a street to a highway reconstruction, which was like a $4 million project that we ended up putting in a tax incremental financing district. we ended up putting in a tax incremental financing district. Then there was another project where we got a grant through, that one happened to be in Wisconsin, so I got a Wisconsin DOD, Department of Commerce grant, and in Minnesota I did one where you got a D grant for a road and sewer, actually. But you just got to put it in line with leveraging the business that wants to make an investment for the grant, and you just have to go through the steps and do it. So it's a lot of capital improvement projects and that's where I got the capital improvement planning processes down as well. It's like, well, what's first and what's second? Sometimes the second, sometimes the third one goes to first because there's a grant there. So it all depends on how you're doing it. That's how, way I think it should be done, although I don't make all the final decisions, I just make some. So that's some of it. Then I, after that, after I started my own business for a little while and got a couple rentals and stuff, then I went to Foley and I started, and I was responsible for doing the whole budget and the whole budget was just that. It was very involved and it was line by line, but it's actually kind of easy once I got the knack of it, once I got the hang of it. You know, you talk to the managers or supervisors of that area and make sure you're covering your costs for the different cap items as well as their operations cost. You know, today's operating conditions for manpower is pretty important, so we'd have to weigh those decisions or weigh that part of the budget, I think, in this coming year probably. Because, you know, you want, it looks like, it sounds like you have a very good staff right now, and I think that building a staff is important to be able to give them what they need, too. I kind of experienced that for a little thing I run for my daughter. So my budget and experience, again, Foley, and then I went to Princeton where I had a finance director. It was great. He did all, he did a lot of the work for me and I just did the review with him and I worked with the supervisors a bit, too. That was kind of nice because there was a lot of it done, a lot of analysis afterwards or say as the year was unfolding as to whether or not we were staying in budget or not or what areas might need adjustments. So I think I'm going to rest there. Is there any questions about that?
The budget that you did put together yourself, what was the size of the budget?
Four million.
How many dollars? Four million?
Roughly four million and Princeton was about 10, if I remember correctly.
Any enterprise funds whatsoever?
Yeah, well, and that, to be honest, 10 million sounds kind of nice to some people, but I think it was six of that was liquor stores, so it was just a little, it was just, you know, it didn't take a lot of time to be able to do that one because it's pretty well set.
Thank you. Question 10. What have you previously done to educate new members about finances and keep members apprised of changes to the budget? And I think that means council members.
Yeah. Well, there's a couple of things that I've done and, you know, and I think some of this goes to particular projects and some of it goes to the operated budget, so it all depends. There's a capital, there's two aspects to it. Sometimes you've got a capital project that also, oh, there's something wrong, you know, like in this one particular case of Princeton, they were going to cut, they had planned it three years before when they received the grant to go right through the middle of this property. Well, the property owner wasn't real happy about that, I come to learn. So, and he could, he had a case for a takings case, you know, so we thought, well, we've got to move this over right away, you know, before it gets too late because we had a limited time clock on the, on the backend. So we moved it over and, and everybody, the council had to be apprised that this adjustment was, was being considered because, for the various reasons, and that, and they thought it was the right thing. I thought it was the right thing, so we moved it over and completed the acquisition. Another area of experience that I've had to, so the other, the other thing as far as budgets, you know, I think that it's good to be able to have a review, say a quarter review of the budget and probably let the council. If there's questions that come up in between, I think that that's good to, the council's aware. I think one of the ways that I feel that that would be best handled is probably in a, I like to do, I've always done monthly reports. I've done them more often than that in the past, but I've done them to planning, commission and council members to make sure everybody's up to speed on what's taking place. They oftentimes have a little bit, maybe a reference to a particular document or a reference to further information so that a council member can maybe read a little bit more, access a little bit more information. I think that's probably a better way to update them on a budget items or some areas, some differences in the budget expectation, so that's probably how I would do it. That's how I've done it in the past.
Got you. Question 11. Describe how you would communicate and build trust with one, the city council, and two, the city staff.
I would create opportunities to talk. That's really the best way to do it, and I'd keep an open-door policy. I think that, I think having opportunities to talk is still important. Good, frank discussions.
Is there anything you would do more aggressively than keeping an open-door policy?
Oh, no, I think the monthly reports, I indicated previously, and I think having-
Written or oral?
Oh, written. Sorry.
No, probably just make-
And I've always, and I haven't, I guess, I just haven't looked at enough of your agendas to know if you have a place in your agenda where supervisors make comments at the meeting or not. I'm used to being, having an oral report at the beginning or end. So that's up to the council, but I think it's, I think it's a good idea.
Question 12. How would you balance the resident desire to remain rural and the developers' desire to want more development?
I think that is something that the planning commission has, has made some decisions on already and, and the planning commission's ideas have come to the city council and the comprehensive plan has been established, so unless the council and planning commission wish to make adjustments to it, I, I think the decision's already been made. Now it is, everything's fluid and I think there could be some areas, well, I know there's some areas that are set now for, I think, two and a half acre lots, but I think you have to weigh the pros and cons again and, and take a look at it. I mean, there's, I mean, you have some beautiful sites out here, both, say, large lot or small, small hobby farms as well as areas that are nice, I don't know if I can call them estates, but large homes, too. And again, it's, it's up to the, the council or the planning commission. The residents' input is certainly important, but, and to create opportunities for perhaps some of those discussions to be at the planning commission would be most appropriate, I think, to start with. But the decision's pretty much been made from what I understand. I, I think I understand the objectives of the council right now and that is to, to work with the planning commission and establish some covenants, covenants or zoning, I'm sorry, I don't know which, which direction you're taking on there, as well as to work with the, I think there's a couple quarters where there's some two, two or two and a half acre lots, but, and that's fine, that's doable, I mean, assuming it perks and things, but even if it doesn't, there's ways to, to make things to work. I mean, I've worked with an area, I, I worked with in Richmond, the town of Star Prairie, where they were, we had to put a sewer line in because, because there was a landfill that was contaminated that was failing, and we were able to find mechanisms and ways in which people could, that were there presently, were able to get serviced with good fresh water as well as the area could grow if it wanted to, but then it had different, say, had come into the city, basically. So I mean, there's, you just have to discuss those options with the people involved. That's what I do.
Question 13. Tell us about your experience working with police, fire, and emergency responders to create, maintain, and exercise an emergency management plan.
Okay. Well, so it's keyed in on the emergency management plan. So, well, one thing I'll just cover right front is I've worked on two, in the, say, the origination of two emergency management plans and if I'm chosen, I guess this would be the third. And I think that in Princeton, it was the fire chief and the police chief were primarily responsible and involved in the creation of that plan. I think that there was, there was already one in place to be, I can't remember if it was already in place or if it was just in process. I think it was in process, actually. And in Foley, we had to start from the beginning and, and create a plan. I have my basic, I can't remember, 101 and 201 training, which is required of an administrator as well for the emergency management. And I'm familiar with the pros and cons in, in being able to, the responsibilities involved in the, in the plan. I think that the fire chief and the police chief, or I guess in this case it would be the sheriff's department, that there would be a key involvement in, in responding to that and how it would be implement, implemented. At this particular time, I don't know the dynamics of, of the individuals or how some of the contract items of the sheriff's contract would work and what that would mean for involvement in the emergency management plan, but certainly their involvement and feedback in the creation of that plan would be very important, and especially since somebody is on duty here, I think they're on, I think they're 24/7, but I'm not sure if it's 24/7 or not. So their involvement would be key because they may become one of the first individuals that might be aware of it, even perhaps prior to the fire chief's notice. So I'd have to work through that process of being able to create a good plan and a good response and a good public response as well, so I've done it.
Just to let you know, Bob, you're doing great. We're just past half hour. Question 14, so you're doing good.
Oh, okay, thank you. Then I can stop. We only have 15 minutes left.
All right, Bob, you all set?
Yeah.
We'll plow forward. Describe the steps you would take to network and to develop relationships with neighboring city administrators.
Well, you know, I, I'd have to be more familiar with some of the network organizations that are set in place here. I know Anoka County is a pretty active county and I think I would be involved in, with the county, and I know there's a couple administrators and development directors that are active in the groups of the county there, so I'd have to learn a little bit more to be able to see how that works. I also think working with the, the communities to the south would be important because those are the ones where some of the pressures for growth and development might occur, and it might be a really nice natural mix to be able to provide them some of, some of the people who might want to, residential developers who want to look for land so that we can move them where they're wanted. And, and I think that that's a lot of times what needs to be done, is to facilitate more conversations with those that want those conversations. I think that that would be key. I also think that working with the county, perhaps with a development organization, because I went through your industrial, I think it's called an industrial park, isn't it, or commercial or industrial area? It's kind of like right next to each other, I learned. I think that you have a lot of dynamics going on there, much more than I realized, and I don't know what lands you have near there that could be further developed like that, but you have a lot going on that could accommodate more growth in that particular area, and that might be a great area to be able to, sorry, continue the growth of your tax base that's not going to necessarily rely just on your few, say, fewer than norm, fewer than usual residential sites. So that would be an area that I'd want to look into and work with, say, some of the county organizations. But yeah, that would be just my first impression about the community. I don't know that that's the direction the council wants to go in or planning commission, so I'm pretty flexible as to how that works.
Bob, why don't you describe for us the experience you've had in working with other units of government to develop cooperative service partnerships?
Okay, thank you. So I'll mention just a couple or a few. So in, I've actually done quite a bit, in, in Princeton, I worked with the township to be able to kind of jointly fund a redevelop, or re, the repaving of a road and some of it was in the city, some of it was in the township, and so that was, we were able to come up with a solution for it. And first, it was a very skeptical situation, also involved a school district, too, which they had an assessment on, so they weren't really thrilled about it, but yet we were able to come up with a mechanism to be able to keep everybody satisfied with the end result and the project got completed. I mentioned Riverside Park where I worked with the DNR, I worked with the Department of Tourism where we got a grant to be able to get the outfitter in place and the DNR and DOT to be able to get the permits that were necessary there. A couple others I worked with, with the county, with Benton County as well as Sherburne County. I can't remember exactly what Sherburne County was, the, the trail project I mentioned where we had to move the trail to the side of his lot. That was the Great Northern Trail. And so there was administered, that grant was administered through the county because the city didn't qualify to be administering because of the size of that city. I've worked with, I've worked with every county that I've been in, I've had to work with the county, and I think it's a great partner, and I've worked with the state organizations that have been great partners to be able to bring things to, to get things done, basically. And a lot of times it's, could, oftentimes, which is great, one party wants to get it done more than the other, and oftentimes that means they're going to pay for, a little bit more for it, which is kind of nice, too, you know? Sometimes it's a city priority and sometimes the city has to step up, too. But I think that it's finding the common threads to be able to move them forward and bring the discussions forward, and, and I've worked with both local individuals, sometimes it's a house owner, to be quite honest, and sometimes it's a developer and sometimes it's a, sometimes it's somebody who comes in and wants to disrupt the community, and sometimes it's good and sometimes not, so.
All right. Question 16. Describe how you would become involved in the now-then community were you to become a city administrator.
Well, I'd probably have to come to those two social events coming up. You know, I think one is in August and one is in September, so they're in my calendar. It's probably, and I'd work with the people that come into the city hall to hear what their thoughts are and introduce myself and, and hear what they had to say and what their thoughts are on the community. I found it really interesting, you have the, it, I think this is the commercial area where you have like the gas station and a couple businesses right down the road there. It seemed to be the commercial hub and-
It's downtown.
That's downtown.
Yeah, it's downtown.
The gas station and, okay.
That's it. That's it.
If you're meeting in downtown now, then that's what it'll be.
Well, it's nice, you can tell, you know, I mean, I could tell. And, and the industrial, so this is certainly a hub, this whole area is the hub, you actually have the commercial spot right next to it. Hope there's a couple little lots around there, I was trying to look, I think there's a couple areas that might work, depending on that septic system and how the zoning works, but it's an interesting area. I lost track of the question.
Describe how you would become involved in the now-then community.
I would meet the business, the next step I would do besides the people that walk in and going to those social events is meeting some of these business people. I don't know if there's a organization in now-then, I didn't see a chamber or anything. Maybe, I don't know if the council will be up for this, but maybe we could invite them to the council meeting sometime and just hear what they had to say. I think, I think we could tell them a few things and give them some information and maybe they want to grow, you know, maybe, I mean, commercial tax base is a really good tax base, commercial and industrial tax base.
Question 17. Describe your experience in developing, coaching, and holding employees accountable.
So would I, it's kind of diverse, to be quite honest. I've had it where, where there's a lot of individuals that really know what they should be doing and they do it, but sometimes it needs, it's nice if their job descriptions reflect that. I think it, I think sometimes tweaking those job descriptions is a good thing to do. It's time-consuming, but it's just good to address it. I think that coaching moments is a really good way to do it and, and I had mentioned that it seems like Natalie, Natalie and Arne are really open to those discussions and coaching. Sometimes, sometimes you lead, sometimes you follow, to be quite honest. I think that's a good way of operations. But I think helping everybody understand what their role is and what the council's thoughts are on the role that the city wants to accomplish is really important and to make sure that their descriptions and their performance is meeting those objectives.
I'm not, not real big into formal reviews, although coaching is much better. Formal reviews really come into play more so when somebody's not taking the coaching moments as coaching and, and more specific direction is needed. I've been involved with that aspect as well and including releasing somebody, but it's, you know, it's not good any, either way. It's much better if you can find a way to make things work, I feel.
Question 18. Other than what you've already been asked about, please describe additional priorities you see for the city of now-then.
All right, all right, all right. That was a fast 18 questions. I didn't realize we were that far along. I think I've shared- I think I've shared some of the thoughts that I have about perhaps some of the considerations that could be made as the city moves forward. I understand a few of the thoughts of the city council and the planning commission, but nowhere near what we needed to, to be able to say this might be worth considering. The only thing I would really need to do to start with is really hear what further directions there are that individuals in the council, the planning commission members have. And I, to be honest, I didn't see a lot of council members, I didn't look at a lot of council discussions. They're pretty law. I mean, I love, I love being involved with them, but when you're just witnessing historical information, it's not always as interesting.
I, I was going through the planning commission, come to that realization again because I understand the directions they're wanting to make and shape for the commercial and industrial areas. That's great. But when it gets right down to it, there's so many details that become so important to the individuals involved and when the planning commission's doing a review of a plan. But otherwise, it's just, whether it's green or orange or brown, it's just a color. So, and it's important how it's integrated into the overall scheme and to make sure that there is those directions and schemes. I like that. As somebody who did some planning, not necessarily in my training, my training is in economic development and working forward with getting things done. And that's what I do best, is really trying to find synergies to get things done, to move people forward in the directions they can find consensus on. And there are so many opportunities to build consensus that can allow a community to move in the directions they want. And that's what makes people happy, and I like happy people. So, and I'll be honest, I've made my mistakes in the past too. I hope I've learned something. I think I have, you know, so.
What's your favorite tool for developing? You talked about building consensus. Well, how do you do that? What's, what's the magic pill?
Other people's money. Using other people's money. That's really what I found to be the biggest thing. Project is always sweeter when somebody else is paying the bill, especially if it's going to bring cat space. But there is many ways. You have to build consensus. Building an idea, sometimes it's, sometimes it's a concept. A gathering place is a good, is a good, is a, is a great thing to do, to be able to have people come together, to be able to, a destination, those are all good things. And sometimes, it is an idea. Those other people's money doesn't come for anything else other than an idea, but if it's a good idea, it will attract money. I'm sorry, was that question 18?
That is 18. Mayor, did you want to take council questions first, since there is some time, and then go to Bob's?
I think that would be good. So what we'll do is we'll, we'll see if the council has any follow-up questions, and then our last question will be questions after all of this that you would have for us. Council, anything you'd like to see followed up on?
I'm good.
Very thorough.
Well, I do just have a couple of...
I haven't gotten through here yet, sorry.
No, I'm just saying.
You're good, Mary?
I'm, I'm good.
All right. You said you did get an opportunity to see some of our meetings, and were they helpful to get you to sleep?
No, actually, I, I enjoy the meetings. I really do enjoy them. It's just that I knew that if I really got into it, it wouldn't, you know, each meeting is, they seem to be much more than an hour. And I would listen to 20, 30 minutes, and I thought, well, I think I listened to enough of this one. But it's amazing how I was able to get some of the, of the directions that the council is going on. I think I read some minutes to it, by the way. But I really find it interesting to be able to work with a, with a public body because I think it's productive. And what you're really doing is building a community, and you're not building somebody else's wealth. I think you're building a community, and I like building community. When you see people get together and to be able to, to be happy, basically, and to move in a certain direction or the directions they want to go, those are really rewarding things. And I enjoy that work. And I enjoy, especially when they're maybe building a community park, or they're maybe, one guy's building his factory, you know? Yeah, it's going to be for his profit, hopefully it works out for him, but it's also going to be creating something for the community too, because it's a place for people to stop if it's commercial, or it's a place where people work, and work is an important element. Now, it might not be the putting the people to work that are in some of the homes on your five acre sites, but there is still, a good example though, is some of the hobby farms you have, or some of the farms, is this place you have over here that does the erosion control business. I worked with a business just like that, that built a building in, I'm sorry, in Foley. They make the erosion control mats. I can't remember the name of your company there, but that one was still tied, but...
Erosion Works.
What is that?
Orosion.
Orosion, yeah. So being able to see things like that happen are, I think, are great community building opportunities that we should all be celebrating to happen, because that means that things are working, to be honest. And I like to be able to do those things.
Did you happen to look at our website at all?
Oh, yeah.
Any, any comments on that?
It's pretty well organized. I think it's good. I don't know how, how new it is, or it looks like it's fairly new.
We've updated it recently, so. We know what we think about it, we just know people on the outside are thinking about it, so.
Pardon?
We don't know what people that don't live here think about it, we know what...
Oh, no, I think it's really good. It's well laid out. It has a good organization, has a nice pictures in the, picture in the front and dropdown menus. Just a comment that I would have, perhaps, and not to be, but it's, it's a little, a little difficult to listen to your meetings on the YouTube because of the sound, but...
That's fine. Feedback is good, so.
There's your feedback. But I wanted to ask a couple of questions, just about the timeframe in which you're looking, I know you have interviews today and tomorrow, I believe, it's this week, I know. Yeah, I think it's today and tomorrow, are you...
Today and Thursday, actually, but...
And then, what is your expected timeframe?
Our anticipation is that after our last interview on Thursday, we will have our deliberations and we'll come to a conclusion Thursday night is the intention, so.
Okay.
And at that point, there will be some discussion on how we negotiate with the candidate going forward, so. So we do have that as an agenda item on our Tuesday meeting next week, so.
Well, and I suppose there's many different ways to, to choose and to negotiate and things like that, you know? You probably want it here, I probably want it there, somewhere in the middle is usually where it's easier to just be done with it. But I'm interested in the community and learning what I can about how you'd like to move the community forward and to work to form alliances with individuals and groups. I'm not sure what groups would be here, but there usually are a few groups of people that tend to have goals.
That's good. That's great. Those discussions help us all, I think. If I can be of service, that's what I'm looking for.
Can we go back to your timeframe question?
Sure.
What were you getting at? I was, you just wanted to know where we're going. Do you have a preference? It'd be nice to know.
Do I have a preference for what?
Yeah. I mean, are you out of wherever you are in 30 days, or are you more immediately available?
I'm open. I, I work on my own projects right now. I have, I'm getting tired. I just fixed a bunch, I have a few rentals and things like that, and I just did a lot of catch-up maintenance in the last period of time and working with, setting up my daughter's independent living house. And I'm at a pretty good spot now. I really don't, I was debating whether I would remodel the kitchen out, but I just finished the bathroom, so I'm not really, I don't really want to do that kitchen, so...
You'd rather have an excuse not to do the kitchen, is the thing.
Well, and the people there are really content, and it would be disruptive to, to be honest, so, I mean, I, how much do you disrupt the apple cart? Sometimes you're better off just moving it forward, you know, or just leaving things. So I'm open, but I would like some time. I, I do, I do have a couple of commitments. I committed to a, I committed to a, one of the hobbies I have is I sail and I joined the race league this year, and I committed to a crew till the end of the season, which is only once a week, or a couple of Saturdays, but, so I have to, I made that commitment to the crew, so I would like to see that through, which ends in, what, September, so. It's really fun to be able to form a crew and to be able to see, to have five people on the boat trying to sink in the sink, it's interesting.
Yeah, I bet.
On a sailboat, it's, especially when the winds are heavy. It's fun, so.
So where, where does that sailing take place?
On the sink near a river in Hudson. So it's not too far.
So with that said, you're, you'd like to see that through. When, when are you available, should you be chosen?
What do you mean, if I was chosen?
If you were chosen for this position, when would you be available to?
I'd probably want a couple of weeks, and, but I'd be, I guess I'm open. I would just have, there might be certain times that I would need, let me just put it this way, I certainly could keep the hours there. I certainly could, could start by 10 o'clock if that was available to me, if you needed me sooner than later. But I would eventually change that to regular hours, so. But otherwise, I'd like maybe a couple of weeks. I hope I was direct enough there.
That's fine.
I wasn't trying to, okay.
Nope, very direct.
People's life continues to move and, you know, people have things on their agenda.
Yes, yeah. Nobody expects that you gotta take your place.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I've been enjoying my summer. I don't wear shoes too often.
Well, we're glad you won today, so.
All right. I appreciate everybody's time and consideration. I don't mean to, no disrespect in the jokes that I put out there.
I appreciate your, your time and your interest.
Yes.
Nice job.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you, Bob.
Thanks, Bob.
Thank you, and nice to meet you.
It's nice to meet you.
Good to meet you.
If you don't mind, thank you.
It's all yours.
Zachary Crank. I think that's a, a good thing, it didn't quite, didn't follow it enough to, our decision is one thing, their availability is, is important to clarify. I missed a little, as it, he wants to keep crewing through September, but he'd be available with your hours, kind of, in a few weeks, if we can keep the 10 o'clock start.
Right.
I'm not sure what that has to do with the sailing, but...
I'm not either, frankly. He did, he was kind of surprised when we talked today about 10 to 5. What, 10 to 5? What in the world?
Well, those are kind of unique hours, actually.
They are, they are.
So I can see why you'd be a bit surprised.
It has a lot to do with coming all the way from Prior Lake.
Right, definitely.
I told him that. I said, they've been very, very nice to me.
I wondered like the crewing too was Saturday.
Yeah.
Yeah, I wasn't quite sure how that fit in.
He has probably other things on his plate besides that.
Make good time, though.
Smoke 'em if you got 'em.
If I had my old Chevy Nova, I'd smoke 'em.
Oh, there's, there's a guy down by me that, pretty distinct vehicle, because he's got one white finger, but he loves to go out in the middle of Nowland Boulevard and do 360s, just smoke his tires and do dolts. I'm like, there's, there's places, I see the tire tracks and back roads, the middle of Nowland Boulevard just seems like a...
Got to move.
Yeah.
How he keeps it on the road, I'm just amazed. He goes shoulder to shoulder, but... Nobody in the RCA has really addressed what happens to our seasonal part-time workers if we, if we decide to go Juneteenth, you know, as, as an RCA. Nobody really addressed what happens to, one person addressed, you'd have to consider your seasonal and your, your part-time, what, what does that mean to them? I mean, they either lose a day of work, or they come in unsupervised. But it was really, the idea was you shut down the whole city, what happens to everything else?
Yeah.
Some of them were, well, didn't seem to take any consideration. The other thing was, while it's in the budget, because we're paying them anyway, it's a loss, loss, a day of lost productivity for staff, but what do you do? You know, do you keep the office open? Because those are part-timers. So it really, I think to your point, you picked a tough one, because you wanted to see how broad a scope you're looking. You're just going to say, well, it's not a state holiday, or it could be a state holiday, so let's just do it.
Sure.
It certainly is, is more expansive than, than the private sector. But then, there's a lot of questions as to how do you address that, so.
Yeah. Yeah, they could almost take it any direction they wanted to, or just lay out your...
Some of them didn't take it very far.
There you go.
Some of them gave you a lot of background.
So he's coming from Wichita?
Yep.
Wow.
So has he, has he got family here in town, do you know, or?
Uh, you know, he went to, he didn't go to school in this area.
Went to Cleveland.
Yeah.
But he worked in Fridley and he worked in Brooklyn Park.
Yeah, he worked in Fridley, yeah.
In...
He must have family somewhere in Minnesota.
His, his reference said he wants to get back to where he's from, assuming there's family here.
Yeah, I'm not sure where, but, yeah.
So here's our candidate right now. Get that hot seat, we'll ask you all these questions.
Yeah.
Don't have all the right answers.
Those are questions, anyway.
Yeah, no, I, I know all the answers now, huh?
You don't need, you have more time. You could ask more questions, because you have a full hour, so, once we start, it's, you know, it's not that we, you have to be done by 5 o'clock. It's, we can start a little later, so we would have more time if you wanted to ask more questions.
Yeah, that's, you know, it, I don't think we cut him off there.
Yeah.
Because, you know, he had said something about 15 minutes.
Yeah.
And I should have said, well, actually, no, we've got 25. I should have clarified that for him because... And I should have said, "Well, actually, no, we've got 25." Should have clarified that for him, because we started about 10 after with him.
Correct.
And the anticipation was, "You get your full hour."
Yeah, regardless of what we scheduled.
So I guess we can make that clear, that there's this much time left. You got the time, so. My answer, would you shut the door, please?
Is that good, Bill?
Good.
There we go.
Mind your own place.
All right.
If not, we're not looking much.
Thanks for, thanks for having me.
Zach? Is it Zach or Zachy?
Desmond, Zach.
Jason.
Nice to meet you.
I'm Linda. Nice to meet you.
Mary Jeffy.
Nice to meet you.
Hi, Zach.
Joel.
Hi, Mary, Linda.
My apologies.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Yeah, if you're not in the right place, you walked into something.
It's awkward, man.
We're having our lodge meeting and...
You're running for president.
That's a fresh water there. We just opened it for you.
Thank you.
So what, we've got an hour. We'll give you the full hour. You're the last candidate of the day. We have three more candidates on Thursday. So we have a total of 19 questions. The last one is yours.
Okay.
And so Frank's going to be reading the questions. We'll be making our notes. And if there's a follow-up, the councils, it's okay to follow up. But you take the time that you feel is necessary to get it done. Pat's going to be our timekeeper, so if we're getting to the halfway point, if we're not halfway through the questions, he'll tell us to pick it up a bit. If we're halfway point and we've got a lot of time left, you can expound more if you want. But this is an opportunity to basically let us see who you are and what you know about us and what kind of fit we think we got here, so. So be relaxed and answer accordingly.
As relaxed as you can be, right?
I'll do my best.
All right.
First question is a two-part question. That's how we can keep it down to 19. That's right. Please tell us what your interests are about the now-then administrative, administrator position. What are your interests about the now-then administrator position? And highlight key qualifications that make you the best person for the job.
So I think that part of the interest level is not only this position, but it's the community you guys have. And I'll say from what I've seen so far, I've been really impressed that this is a community that's a very engaged community and very active community. People don't just come home and go to sleep. There's events year-round. You even have a farmer's market. I think that's the coolest thing. And so, you know, it's not, there's going to be always something going on. And so that's really important to me, because I want to be out in the community and getting to know folks. And you can't do that if people are just at their house all the time. But as far as the position itself, I think that I have a background that aligns with some of the needs you have. From what I can tell, you have, you aren't looking for someone to come in and start putting up, you know, subdivisions left and right. That's the opposite of what you want. So, you know, I don't have a planning background, an engineer background. I have a government background. You're looking for someone to come in and build on the work of Mr. Boils and his team and solidify that and have someone who can make sure the trains run on time and those basic blocking and tackling functions of local government are done at a really high level. And I think I have the background and experience to do that. Most recently, right now, I work in a budget office. I know you have some financial needs. You need someone who can come in and provide some structure there. And that's something I do on a daily basis right now. And while I was in school, I also had the opportunity to get some pretty broad experience on many functions of local government with economic development, just general administration. So, yeah, I think I align with what you're looking for, and that's part of fit, and that's why you're attracted to me.
Question two. Please describe your supervisory and management style and how they facilitate teamwork between, among and between the council, the staff, and contracted employees.
It's a great question. So I have had the good fortune to be a project manager for a lot of different projects, in Wichita and Fridley, all over the place. And generally, my approach for that is, as a project manager, it's, they're looking to you to initiate structure. First of all, just figure out what the scope is of what we're trying to accomplish and define that. Define what we're not trying to do, because we don't want to waste time on things that are superfluous. And then also come up with a plan of action. Is this, is this something that, where we need to meet every week? Have check-ins? Is there research to be done, assigned tasks? And then the other piece, too, to that approach is also how do you motivate people? And I think that, for me, what I've seen is the true motivators aren't necessarily command and control all the time. They want to get to know folks on a personal level, and they want to create cohesion and that sense of camaraderie. And once you do that, and you have the goal in mind, then hopefully people can roll in the right direction. So, yeah, initiate structure and motivation, and that's kind of my general approach.
All right, thank you. Questions for you?
I just ask a follow-up on that. One of the things is, much of our city is contracted employees. These are people who are paid by the hour, a lot of money by the hour. So initiating structure and a plan of action, how do you guide them as the supervisory and management style for those people that, the more they talk, the more money they get?
If I could be so... No, I hear you. So one thing that's really critical is whoever you hire, when they come in, I think they need to work really hard to understand your expectations as a city council and what is your philosophy and value system. Because then, as the administrator, it's our job to translate that to people who work for the city, but also people who don't. And as you get more comfortable with one another, the administrator and the council, then you're able to, it becomes much easier to disseminate that information to contract workers. Now, I think that there is some parallels between classical project management and what the situation you described, because as a project manager, I'm not necessarily their boss. And I have to do what I can to show them that, "Hey, it's a good idea if you follow me." And, you know, if they're missing expectations, then there's opportunities to have conversations about that. But if you set the clear expectation at the beginning, you know, I try to think the best in people. But I have no problem, no trouble, excuse me, holding people accountable if they know what was expected at the beginning.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All righty. Please share examples of staff and coworkers that you have supervised in the past or influenced that advanced themselves in the organization and assisted them to be more successful.
So I think if you were to ask my colleagues that I have currently right now, what could you describe? Could you describe Zach and his approach? And I think if you asked him that, I would hope they would tell you that he's really patient and helpful. When I started in Wichita, I was in the city manager's office, which obviously had a scope throughout the organization. You get, you build relationships with all different kinds of departments in that role. And then I shifted into the finance department, where I was, you know, assigned specific departments and my scope was less. But even when I shifted that role, I was getting calls from people from my previous job, because they knew that I could help them. And it's so critical that, as a team, we find ways to complement one another. And I know that I may be weak in one area, well, I can go to so-and-so to help me, and I want to fill that role when I'm called upon to. So, yeah, that's how I would answer that question.
Can you give me an example of some of the people you have supervised?
I don't have any formal supervisory experience, but I think I've kind of described my approach to project management, which I think is definitely relatable. You know, I aspire to be someone who is a servant leader, which I understand is a buzzword. But for me, that, that's, that means that you serve first, you put others' needs before your own, and you want to do what you can to help them grow and develop. And, yeah, that's...
Brilliant. Question four. Please describe a team that you recently led and a task. What made them successful or not so successful?
So as a budget analyst, one of my assignments is the capital improvement program. I'm kind of the CIP coordinator. And that involves a lot of various tasks. It starts in February for us. And I work hand-in-hand with the finance director. He handles the capacity analysis, how much can we afford? And then I was heavily involved in intake of ideas from staff, from departments. This is our wish list of things. But we know that oftentimes the wish list is more than we can actually afford. And you go from that beginning to the end, the endpoint is a final capital improvement plan that gets redone every year. In their case, it's a 10-year plan, but they redo it every year. And we just, on Friday, printed that for the city council, and so that was a big accomplishment. In between, we know that, you know, there's metrics on the calendar. You know, by this day, we better have, you know, a good understanding of truly how much we can afford. And then four weeks later, when we have our committee meeting, we need to make sure that the committee's prepared to make recommendations about, "Okay, we can't afford everything. These are the ones that we think are most important." And then, once you have that, it gets tweaked throughout the process, and then you roll into, the financial decisions have been made, now we got to do whatever we can to get the document produced for publication. And how do I know that we're successful, as I ask? I mentioned the committee. I should have been more specific that they have an administrative committee chaired by an assistant city manager. And every step of the way, me and the finance director ask him, "Hey, are we meeting your expectations? What are we missing?" So I have no problem asking feedback throughout the process. And also, I take a great pride in my work product. And I know that the first go-around isn't going to be up to the standard that I have just internally as an intrinsically motivated person. So it's both internal and external feedback, and if, there's also statutory deadlines, too. If we miss, if the budget's not passed at this time, then that's a big problem. So that's a good motivator.
So just to be clear, the assistant city manager is the top of the heap, right?
In that sense, yep.
Okay, and then where are you in that?
So the committee includes assistant city manager, city engineer, public works director, planning director, 10 people. And it's kind of like I'm supporting a board or a commission. I'm staffing them, making sure that all of the information is digestible and presented to them as they make their decision. And then there's times where they ask for my input, too.
Okay, thank you.
I'm not an official committee member, if that was your question.
Yeah, I'm just trying to see where you were in the organization format for this particular committee. Question five. Some councils are more involved in day-to-day affairs. How would you manage this to the city's best interest?
Yeah, so I think that, you know, as this organization transitions from a clerk treasurer to a city administrator position, there's definitely going to be a period where whoever you hire and this group right here needs to feel out what those boundaries are. I have an understanding in my mind, from my education and background, what a classical situation would be, about what that role is classically defined as. But I understand that that's not necessarily the context that you work in all the time. So I think there needs to be a feeling-out period, and that requires great trust-building, and, you know, I anticipate that. But I also understand that there, you all, as elected officials, have goals in mind, and there were motivations for why you wanted to run for city council. And there might be particular projects that you take a keen interest in, and it's the job of the administrator to deliver on those projects on your behalf, but to keep you updated and involved as much as you want to be. So, you know, there's organizational things, and then there's more of those pet projects. And, you know, maybe you're more involved on, you know, I don't, you'd have to tell me what you're really, really interested in. But, you know, that, I think that's natural. I really do.
Thinking about previous employers, how have your work actions benefited previous employers?
How they benefit, so you'd probably have to ask my bosses. But I would say that I think it's a good sign that both in Fridley and in Wichita, I started out in those organizations with, in Fridley, I was an intern for the summer. And I actually finished my graduate degree in December. I didn't finish in the spring. And I had a good understanding that I really wanted to pursue an ICMA fellowship. And those traditionally start in June, July, so I had this gap that I had to fill, that I wanted to be productive. And I would like to think that if I wasn't providing value, if I hadn't proven myself enough in that summer context, they wouldn't have given me the opportunity to return in January until I moved to Wichita. And then in Wichita, I was a fellow, and the way ICMA sets things up, sometimes it's two years, sometimes it's one year. But I signed up knowing that, okay, in the case of Wichita, it's one year. That's the commitment they made to me, and that's the commitment I'm making to them. But I was able to grow that into a full-time position that certainly was not guaranteed at the beginning. So I think those are kind of some metrics, I would think, too, of, in my providing value to the organization. Now, moving forward as a young professional, what do I envision the value I can provide to others? Is, I think that I have a pretty well-rounded experience so far. I was very strategic in the type of opportunities I sought out. I really wanted to try to learn as many different things as possible. But 100%, I have more to learn, and that's always, that's always something that, you know, in this profession, you know, got to be a lifelong learner.
Okay. Question seven. Describe a controversial situation that you were part of, involve, and also involve public scrutiny and media attention. How did you handle the situation? What was the outcome?
So I don't have an example from me being the head honcho and the newspaper wrote a nasty article about the city. So I don't know if that's good or bad. But I can tell you that I've been in the room where that's happening, and I've had the opportunity to peek behind the curtain. And, you know, in a support role, my opportunity, my obligation is to, you know, provide information that I'm asked to provide, provide the right information, not too much, but the right amount that's digestible and fair and understood. But, you know, I think that in those situations, honesty and integrity is really important. The controversial things that I... The controversial things that I've experienced in Wichita, or observed, I should say, it really taught me that the way that we go about our business is, it's so important. It's like just as important as the outcomes that we deliver. Because if if you're not doing things the right way, and it may get things done faster, it may be, you know, oh, it gets me home sooner. But in the end, it will sometimes snowball into something that is not manageable. And we want to avoid that.
Question eight. Describe how you believe the relationship between the city administrator and the city council should function.
So I mentioned this in a previous answer, but, you know, there there definitely needs to be a feeling out period. And that includes trust building, and it also includes the administrator learning the motivations, the values, the expectations of the council. And that may be different depending on the council member. And that that's okay. And so you need that to, you know, be a good base level. And then, moving forward, once you have that trust, which, by the way, that's a daily exercise because it can go away real fast. But, you know, once you have that trust, then you gain rapport and you gain an understanding of the type of communication, the type of approach that the council is is comfortable with. And I believe so strongly that the administrator's job is to implement the decisions of the elected officials, number one. And it's also super critical that as the elected officials are going through their decision-making process, the administrator shares with them, you know, good, solid background information that can help them in their decision-making. And so I think those are the two key, really important things as it relates to the relationship between city administrator and the city council. And, you know, and I will say in this answer, too, you know, whoever's new, the new person, whoever it is, you know, they'll go through this, you know, process at the beginning of trying to, you know, build that relationship. And you may try certain things, you know, say, oh, you know, I prefer to be communicated this way. And then you try it out for a little bit, and, oh, you change your mind, that's okay. And, you know, I think something I've learned in in the organizations I've worked so far is we are very iterative, at least where I've been, where let's let's be a little bit better than the last time. And sometimes that's a daily thing, something you do every day that you can improve on. Sometimes it's every year, like the budget, that's a yearly exercise. Sometimes it's every month. But how can we just get a little bit better than last time? And, you know, I think that the administrator is there to to guide the elected officials down that path. How can we improve? How can we be proud of what we're doing and be excited more than we ever have before?
Question nine. Please describe your involvement in budgeting and financial process, the financial process of your organization, as well as your experience with long-range financial planning.
Sure, so as a budget analyst, we have a team of five in in the Wichita Budget Office, and we're led by a budget officer. And our primary function is to develop the budget. And it's it's very odd in Kansas, we have a calendar year, fiscal year, which is not odd. But the odd part is, we, you know, propose our budget in the summer. And so we're doing work now that won't get truly acted upon until January. And then also in that process, we revise the current year. So we revise, you know, we're six months into 2022, we have a better idea of what we need and what we're seeing. And then we prepare for 23, and we do that over. And each each analyst is assigned different departments. For me, that's the park department, city council, and city manager's office. And then also, I touched on, I'm assigned to the capital improvement program, that's really big, too. And at the beginning of the year, in in their cycle down there, we we start to develop kind of a base budget, and that's kind of, you look at what we've done previous in prior years, what we think we need this year. And you add that all up from every department, and you see how much it's going to cost. And then you see how much can you afford, how much you can afford. And then there's extra things that we think would be a really good idea that we aren't going to put in the base because that's not the bread and butter of what we do. And once we know what the base will cost, then we know if we can afford those extra things that we think would enhance service. And so that's the process we've been going on. And it's long range, and really, we we revise the current year, we get ready for the next year, and we also do a third year. So we have 2024 numbers in there that, right now, you know, will get updated by the time 2024 gets here.
But probably will change.
I would be shocked, maybe the city council, that's the only one, because it's a tiny budget. And then it's not enough to just adopt the budget, we're also heavily involved in implementing the budget, right? So once we have a plan, we work with our departments to make sure they're adhering to that plan. And, you know, certain problems arise, we're very much problem solvers. But, you know, we're constantly tracking progress. Every month, I have a spreadsheet that I look at, my departments, how much did we spend? How much do we think we were going to spend? Are we over, are we under? If we're over, you know, then I want to be in touch with with the department director to say, hey, you know, we've got three months left, and you might have to cut back a little bit. So yeah, so there's that process, too. And then more longer range, the CIP is long range. Obviously, in that context, it's 10 years. But I also, we are also assigned, depending on your department, we have we have 35 different funds in the city of Wichita, which is way more than just the general fund. So, for example, since I do park, I also do the golf fund. And as a part of our budget process, we kind of do a six-year outlook of what are we expecting the the golf fund, you know, for every fund, but I'm just using golf as an example. What are we anticipating in the context of golf? What is the industry saying? You know, there's this big pandemic boom of participation, but the experts think it's going to taper off. So maybe we shouldn't anticipate the same number of rounds and the same amount of revenue. And again, we do this every year, so there's six years, and then we do it over.
So just follow up here. So you said there's there's five members on the budget team. So you've got your parks council and city managers.
Yep.
And so each has, each of the other four members have equivalent?
Yeah, and and I would throw a capital improvement program in there, too, as part of my workload. We have a couple of newer staff who they're not taking on the most complex departments because we want to get them set up for success. So i- is it a total perfect 20%, 20%? Probably not. And that's okay, you know, we're, that's that's why we're on a team.
So do do these five members have other responsibilities? I mean, is this your, right now, your primary responsibility would be the capital improvement plan and these three primary parts of the budget to to plan, implement, or adopt, implement, alert people to their status?
Yep.
So this is primarily your function?
That's that's my function, especially at the, in the spring and summer. In the fall and winter, before we get ready to do the whole process again, the way that Wichita uses their budget office is they'll often look to us for research. So, you know, a couple of years ago, they they, one of the big things, when I was in the manager's office, the budget office did a bunch of research on diversity, equity, and inclusion, looking at what other cities are doing. Last year, I did a lot of research on redoing our taxi ordinance. So and it's primarily, right now, it's it's that financial piece. And there's things that happen every month on the tracking side. But in the fall and winter, when we're not focused on, you know, getting a 500-page document ready, then we have opportunities to do other things. And the manager will often reach out, reach down to the budget office to to help out with that.
Thank you.
Did I did I answer your question?
Yep. Question 10. What have you previously done to educate new members about finances and to keep members apprised of changes to the budget? And I think that means council members.
Council members, okay. So in Wichita, the council is involved throughout the process. For brand-new members, when they get elected in November, even before they're in office in January, they will start to ingratiate themselves to the organization. And that takes the form of, you know, kind of orientation meetings. And each department will meet with the council member and the city manager in those. And it gives them the opportunity to learn about the functions of each department and then ask questions that they may have. And of course, this is an ongoing thing once they're actually in office. But as a part of that, there is often a lot of education on on what what the budget is. How does it work? How do we approach it? And so that's even before they're officially seated, often. And once they're, you know, whether they've been there for two months, 10 years, each budget process, we often have to kind of educate them throughout because the context may have changed the last time that the budget was developed. You know, economics change, projections change, needs change of the community. And so there's, throughout the process, there's budget hearings, there's budget workshops where, you know, the council really rolls up their sleeves to provide feedback. And, you know, you can't ask the council to, in good faith, vote on a document that's going to spend a lot of public money without trying to inform them the best you can about it. So that's that's kind of the approach we use in Wichita.
And Zach, you are one of the instructors for this, or?
No, no.
Okay, so you assist or provide research?
Yep, I help I help prepare the materials, and then the the big timers go down there and deliver.
Thank you.
Yep.
Describe how you would communicate and build trust with the city council and also with the staff. And between the two.
Yeah, so how do we build trust? It's a great question. For me, it's, I want to get to know the you guys and staff on a personal level. So that's that's important. It's easier to trust someone you actually know, not this amorphous figure. And then on just a really basic level, when you make a commitment, follow through and deliver that time and time again. And I mentioned this previously, this is something that's really critical at the beginning of this relationship, whoever you hire, but it's also an ongoing process. And that's something I take really, really seriously.
Thank you.
Just just to note, we're halfway through.
No, thank you.
And we're on question 12, so we're, I got plenty of time.
Should I slow it down? No.
No. It's not for you, Frank.
Question 12. How would you balance the resident desire to remain rural in character versus the developer's desire to develop the parcels here?
Sure. So when it comes to that, that's really a policy decision that the city council has made very clear what their preference is. And they, you guys do that in your monthly actions, and you also have the chance to do that every every time you renew your comp plan or amend your comp plan. And so I think that, you know, there's a big process that goes, that's involved in developing a comprehensive plan every 10 years. And you can't totally dismiss that, you know, that's kind of the the basis for everything we do as cities in Minnesota, for sure. Now, of course, maybe there's opportunities when you were developing the comp plan, you couldn't envision whatever, you know, something comes up, right? And then you have a conversation about it, and sometimes you have to amend the comp plan. But you, to me, you really got to look to what your comprehensive plan says because not only was that input provided by elected officials, but there's a lot of community input into that and staff input. And you can't throw that away. But but what I'm hearing from you guys so far, in in everything I've read and watched, you know, that's that's a real core value for you, to maintain that rural character. And, you know, that's that's not something that you should necessarily compromise on. And if that, if you hold that to be part of your identity and part of now then, then that's that's really important, and there's no apologies. You're setting the vision, so.
Question 13.
Sorry, can I say one more thing?
Yeah, sure.
I think it's critical, knowing all of that and hearing all the impact, input from you and moving forward. As the administrator, it's your job to communicate that to the developers, too, if they come in with a big idea. And you say, okay, well, you know, I don't know if the council will really go for this, I'm happy to run it by them. But this is kind of what their vision is for the community. And so as the administrator, you're you're constantly, you know, serving as a liaison to public and developers. So just want to throw that in there.
Thank you. 13. Tell us about your experience working with police, fire, and other emergency responders to create, maintain, and exercise an emergency management plan.
So I don't have a ton of experience on an emergency management plan in a classic sense. I can say that one of the first things that I did, and I was not involved throughout the process, but when I was a fellow in Wichita, it was right in the midst of COVID-19. And before I got there, they realized, hey, you know what? We don't have really strong continuity of operations plans. We have a little, the fire department had one because they're in the emergency business. But, you know, if there's a flood or an earthquake, we, believe it or not, there are earthquakes in Wichita, they're small. How are we still going to deliver on the services that we're committed to providing? And so I did a little bit of work on the front end to set the stage for departments to develop their own continuity of operations plans. And there was some help with the state of Kansas. But again, I don't want to give the impression that I ran that I did not. But as far as working with police and fire, I do have some experience working with public safety agencies. One of the big initiatives that was one of my major projects in Wichita as a fellow was we are in the process of rebuilding our four police stations. They were built in the 1980s, 1990s. They're in really rough shape, but the biggest issue is there's not enough space. The department size has grown. And so we are building modern facilities that can accommodate the amount of officers that we currently have. And there was a big question about where do we locate them? And the one that I worked on in particular is located in a park. And the original idea was to build new in the same park. And long story short, the immediate neighborhood said, please don't take away our green space. It was really 50/50. And so I led the process to engage with the community and evaluate other sites. And that that's something I'm really proud of, and we ended up buying some land from the school district. And we got total buy-in, which was a complete 180 from the first try. And another example I can give, working with police, and this is more in line with, you know, providing emergency response. I really would give credit to the summer of 2020 and civil unrest, where people are, take, took a step back. Our society took a step back and said, what is the role of public safety? How do we provide public safety? What's the best way to do that? And you hear about all kinds of programs throughout the country that are trying, working to integrate mental health professionals into emergency response. Because, you know, police are called all the time into situations that they may not necessarily be truly equipped to handle. And in Wichita, we have a true co-response, emergency response pilot program with a police officer, firefighter, and a social worker. And that's that was up and running before I came. But they found out that, you know, it's important to have that emergency response, but so much of what goes on with what we refer to as high utilizers, it's not in that immediate crisis point. How can we reach the people who need help before they call 911? Because we know that when they call 911, it is a huge amount of time it requires. It requires police, fire, EMS, then we drop them off at the hospital and they stay there and the police has, you know, how can we avoid that? And so I was, I led a team of police officers and people from our county mental health unit to devise another program to figure out on a proactive basis, how can we meet people where they are and provide the services they need? And so the way the city of Wichita sets up their police department, they have these community policing teams, which again, another buzzword, but for them, it means a very specific thing. And, you know, there's officers that are assigned and expected to get to know people throughout the community and assigned geography. And we said, hey, what if we use that infrastructure that we don't have to create, we already have, and pair that with a mental health professional? And we looked at what are the areas of the city that are in most need of mental health response? And we can do that by looking at 911 call data. And we identified the geography we wanted to target. And it started in November and the initial term is one year and we're evaluating how effective it is. And one of the ways we're evaluating effectiveness is, you know, we see people who called 911 30 times in one year, sometimes more. And then, well, what happens if we proactively reach out to them when they're not calling 911? And the preliminary data is really, really powerful and it's like, oh, they don't in some cases. Now, these are still humans, so stuff happens, but that's, that's another, that's, that's an example I can provide about the work I've done with the police department. And that was really hard because I'm, I'm not a police officer and probably never will be. And here I was having to lead cops to a place that they had never been before. And I had to, you know, build trust with them and support them. I didn't want to be an expert. I said, okay, you know, show me what, show me what you do. What does that look like? And help me, help me learn, educate me. And then bring along the mental health piece and it's something I'm really excited about and I hope that it becomes a permanent thing in Wichita. As far as, I, I don't want to leave out fire. I, I don't have a ton of work with fire. I know that's, that's a big deal for you guys with your new, new department and that's something I would be really excited to learn more about and fully support.
Our, our emergency response, we, we hope stays this way, but it's, it's more weather-related or accident-related than, but as the community grows, we'll see how that goes.
Yeah.
Question 14. Describe the steps you would take to network and to develop relationships with neighboring city administrators.
So being that this would be, I would be a first-time administrator, this is so critical for me to be able to connect with people who've done the job. And I've been extremely blessed in my life to have people who have poured so much into me, even though they ask for nothing in return. And I feel like I have a really strong support network in the Twin Cities and in Anoka County that I can lean on, particularly the city manager in Fridley. He's been really good to me, I'm really close with him. And also I'm close with someone who works with Ellers. And so, so that's really good, but that's not enough. I want to get to know as many people as I can, particularly who our neighbors are. I would make a real strong point to, to reach out to those individuals in St. Francis and Oak Grove. And I know Ramsey's undergoing some transition, but eventually Ramsey and, you know, one, it's, it's to help, to help me as I acclimate to a new role, but also it's an opportunity to say, hey, are you having similar challenges? Maybe we can collaborate. But all that, you know, I, I haven't met a single city manager or city administrator who, when I reach out to them and they've just totally, you know, they're usually willing to, to connect and, and I, I would, I would expect nothing different. And then I also want to add too, I'm looped into the ICMA infrastructure and would plan to get looped into League of Minnesota Cities and the Minnesota City Managers Association. But I, I'm hooked in at the national level, given that I was an ICMA fellow and so I'm, I'm familiar with that and would totally want to leverage those, those relationships because it benefits me, but also benefits the city 100%, so.
Question 15. Describe your experience working with other units of government to develop service partnerships.
So I don't want to rehash my story about our social work and police officers, but that, that was partnering with the county government. You know, that, we, we aren't in the business of hiring social workers ourselves. Stay tuned, that might be changing, not trying to spill the beans, but we said, what's the easiest way to do this the quickest? And that was the community partner. Another example I can give is in Fridley. I helped facilitate, there was a small business that was, not really small, a medium-sized business that was potentially relocating from Illinois. And they were looking at some space in Fridley. And they also were looking at some incentives that the state would provide. And I was able to assist in helping them, you know, submit formal application and navigate that bureaucracy to, you know, get the incentives that they, they deserved. And, and they moved to Fridley and there's, I, I just drove by there today on my way up here and they're still there. It's, it's a constant reminder when I drive down East River Road. So those are two examples.
Very good. 16. Describe how you would become involved in the now-then community.
So I'm, I'm a pretty calm guy, but that doesn't mean I can't be excited. And I aspire, I try to use humor and all these things. Someone told me before I came up here, make sure that you're not too calm, which I don't know what that means. I said, that was good feedback, I need to hear. The best feedback is true, right? So, so I, I would just say I aspire to be a behind-the-scenes person who shows up to everything. I'm, I'm a young person with energy, I have the time. I, I want to have the humility to learn from this community and make, and be present. That's, that's what drives me and that's what provides purpose and meaning in my life. I'm really glad that I've been a budget analyst and will continue to be one if that's the path that I, that's given to me, I will. But I don't like just being stuck behind the computer. I've found that, you know, it's, it's hard to feel connected to the work. And getting out and knowing both community members and businesses, that, that's really important to me. In Fridley, I managed their business retention program, which really was just kind of a business visit. And we, we would go out and visit businesses and say, hey, how's it going? What, what are you having challenges with? Maybe it's not a city issue, but hey, maybe we know someone. If you're having problems with the city, how can we help you? And some of the coolest conversations that, that I had, Fridley is very, there's a strong industrial space there. And some of the coolest conversations I had was, hey, what, what do you do? Can you show me? And they would take me out onto the floor and say, this is what we do. And there was medical devices and all the, I had, I had no idea, but it was, you know, that's how you build a relationship. I'm personally not a farmer. My dad loves gardening, I like gardening. Hey, I've, I've never met a farmer that has turned me away if I express interest in, hey, what do you do? What, you know? Curiosity is really powerful and that's a tool I like to use. Getting out in the community is not only, I think, beneficial to the organization, but selfishly, it's what keeps me going, so.
Gotcha. 17. Describe your experience in developing, coaching, and holding employees accountable.
So, not to be a broken record, I've never been anyone's boss yet, but I have no problem holding people accountable, like I said, if the expectations are, are clear. It's easier to do that when you have a good, strong connection and relationship with folks. And that's, that's tantamount. I, I will say that I have served in regulatory roles and so that's not a staff employer relationship, but you're still having difficult conversations. And that's something that I've done and I'm not going to say I love having difficult conversations, who does? But it's something that, that I'm comfortable doing. But really, I want, I, I would want to frame things about, okay, these are the expectations, this is where you are if you're falling short, but what can I do to help you get there? It's not just a, here, you fix it, it's, let's work on this together. Especially in a setting where it's a, you know, very tight-knit, you know, group that you guys have. You know, the administrator wears a lot of hats and it's, it's got to be teamwork. It's not just an individual exercise.
Question 18.
Can I follow up there a second, Frank?
Certainly.
So do you have an example from like your college career? I mean, you probably worked on a project where somebody was not routinely showing up or what'd you do?
So, the answer is, it depends. Sometimes the, the right thing to do, if, you know, there's a very big deadline, is accommodate. You pick up the slack, right? We don't have time to have, get in a big discussion. We have something due tomorrow, the council's expecting this at the end of the day. We need to meet that deadline. So I'm going to, you know, do what you were supposed to do and I'm going to do it because you haven't done it, okay? Sometimes if it's something that is not a big deal, the best option is just to avoid it. Why would you, you know, don't cry over something that really has no impact on what's going on. But when there's those things that are at your core values, those are non-negotiables and that's when you have to have the conversation. And even if you're on a deadline, you can't afford not to have a conversation because once you set an expectation, and people will assume that's the case, and if it's not the expectation you want to set, then you need to clarify that right away.
So do you have an example in the past with you?
I mean, in college, all the time, there's group projects and no one likes them. So you got to do what you got to do. I would say that in, in my current role as analyst, we have things, we have strengths, we have weaknesses. And I'm pretty good at understanding, oh, so-and-so's going to have trouble if we are doing something with, you know, setting up capital projects, so I'm going to help them. Where, oh, Zach needs help if, you know, if, if we're doing a ton of graphs and formatting, that's not one of my strengths and we try to fill, fill each other and complement one another.
Question 18. Other than what you've already been asked about, please describe additional priorities you see for the city of now, now then?
So some of the big community concerns that I've, I've seen so far is, I know that you guys are really itching to solidify your staffing situation, which goes without saying, that's why I'm here. But it's not enough to just hire whoever you're going to hire, it, you know, they, they need to solidify the, the work that Mr. Boils and his team have done and, you know, truly engrain that and make it sustainable. And that's, that's going to be a chore in itself. Another community priority that I've, I've heard you guys talk about is your interest in expanding broadband access. That's, you know, important if you want to attract businesses, for sure. And I, that's going to be one of my questions, hint, hint, is kind of more details about where we're at with that. I did write some of these down. I've, I've heard that you're interested in kind of having a more comprehensive look at your capital improvement plan and going through that process. I'd like to think I'd add some value in that way. Certainly it's a different scale, but the, the skills are translatable without question. And then in, in your, in your profile that Pat sent out, you talk about the importance of public safety and you've got some decisions to make in the coming years about the relationships you have with Anoka County and St. Francis and working through those, those questions as a group is, is going to be something that's really important. So those are some of the community priorities I've heard. I'm looking forward to hearing more, but that's what I can say for now.
Thank you.
Still got time.
So that's, that's what you know about our priorities, now you have questions for us.
Yeah. So I guess my first question would be, as you, you know, you kind of asked me about what I think the role of city administrator is and how does it function? I'm curious to hearing from some of you folks, as you transition from a clerk treasurer to a city administrator, how do you think that that changes, if at all? Maybe it doesn't change your expectations and plans and the relationship between the council and, and staff?
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Mayor. I would just say that I, as a city, we are growing. We grow in small spurts, but a new city administrator needs to stay on top of things. They need to communicate with us. I think that's been an issue that we've had. And to, to listen to council as to what our priorities are and follow through with those. But again, I think communication is the biggest key.
Can I ask a follow-up question? Is there something, is there a technique that maybe Frank's used or someone else in the past that you say, I really like this form of communication versus I don't really like that? You can change your mind in the future too.
Yeah. To, Frank has been very, has, we've had more communications from Frank than we've, we've had in the past, based on open meeting laws and then the time it takes to talk to five people. It's typically in an email memo, memo fashion. And I would just say that as we hire somebody that has more experience or attention to detail, that we would, I would think that we would get more information about something that's going to come in front of us, rather than either nothing in the packet, and I'm not talking to Mr. Boils, but nothing in the packet or what's in the packet is incomplete, which then generates question after question after question.
So I, so I'm hearing an interest in increasing the information sharing so you can prepare to do your job.
I would say, I, I think that the transition from, it was one of the discussions we had as a council, going from a clerk treasurer who is, is very active on a day-to-day basis in a small staff advantage, one of the things we talked about was potentially an administrative clerk treasurer position. The idea that as, the size we are, this position's going to be very active on a day-to-day basis. Frank will tell you, his 26 years as city manager, he probably never anticipated issuing building permits or, or taking money for recycling. We told him when he came in, two of the most critical things, building permits are critical.
Yeah.
But you're going to find out people are really excitable when it comes to closing down the recycling center or not getting a burning permit on the weekend. And he thought I was joking and he learned otherwise. I would say the good transition we've had is to, to bring Frank in here when he went from the clerk treasurer and say, okay, here's somebody who's got experience as a city manager, where they had all authority to come in and learn what it was to be a city administrator accountable to the council and yet doing the work of your staff as well. You know, you wouldn't be, you don't get to sit behind a computer very much. It's, it's a very active role. And I think Frank has done an amazing job in transitioning from what he's done for 26 years to learn what it is to be in that transition. So this role is going to be a very active administrator, which is part of the reason it's a very active council. Because there's not a lot of traditional, we've only been a city 14 years as of last Friday.
Happy anniversary.
Thanks.
We, we missed our cake.
Oh.
But, but because of that, Frank was busy. Because of that, there hasn't been a lot of practice and procedures, transitioning from township to the city, that still need to be developed as we grow. And I think, as I've been telling Pat all the way along, we're a very active council, but as you- but as you talked about, building the trust, that becomes less so. When the information's being provided timely and accurately and thoroughly, um, you know, the questions become less, the involvement becomes less, and then you also help identify what staff needs to be there to make this manageable.
True.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Rayna.
I would also, add to that in that, um, a- as we grow, and as the functions that the staff are doing on a daily basis, uh, change based on computers, you know, outside equipment, whatever, is that we finally take a good look at what does our staff need to look like?
Mm-hmm.
You know, we, we've had the city clerk, we've had the deputy clerk, sometimes at part-time, a maintenance supervisor, a part-time person, we hire some people in the summer, but is that still a good fit for us? So whoever is in that position needs to seriously look at what are our staffing needs, um, and how do we serve our residents in the best way possible, without, um, duplicating, um, our efforts, um, just have, is it more full-time, is it more part-time, is it more department specialization, you know, like a, say, a finance person is? Is it more just a, an over, uh, a public works director, and then the staff, but the director's not full-time?
Mm-hmm.
You know, they, that person gives direction and makes sure that things are done. But I, I just think our overall staffing is something we've never taken the time, um, to look at, as, as to how we do things.
Sure.
Which I think, along those lines, is determining how our contractors could handle that, too.
Yeah.
At what point do you determine some of those people should be in-house, or shared duties, or what that might look like as well?
Um, we are hitting our time, is, can I ask a few more, or no?
You're the last guy of the evening, so. If the council's okay.
Okay, I appreciate that. Um, I was talking a little bit to Natalie and Adrian, um, kind of where we're at with the, the budget process. Um, it seems like we're getting ready to kind of set the stage and do some preliminary work, is that accurate? What, what, two-part question, my turn for a two-part question. What, what is, kind of, your expectations as council? What are you, what do you like to see in, in a budget process?
Ideally, we'd like to go with, with the league guidance that in, in, you know, March timeframe, we'll start working on the capital plan.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that we have some preliminary discussions, uh, among staff in the, the May timeframe, uh, we have something to council in June, and, and we're having our, our workshops by this time, wrapped up in August. Obviously, we have a deadline of getting a, a levy proposal into the county by the end of September. We have not had a, a standard template that we've operated on.
Okay.
We generally are trying to cram things in late in summer, when everybody wants to be gone somewhere else, uh, and coming up with, with that. So we have not seen those, those numbers yet. Um, in the past, the council's been very active in that process. Um, and we typically have a five-year history, and we're, we ask the questions, why are we doing what we're doing? And staff brings in their understanding of next year's expenditures as best we can see, with inflation and everything else, anything else. Um, so we try to have that collaboration between staff preparation and council evaluation.
That's fair.
Running a little late this year.
Yeah. Um, I, I'd said I would ask about fiber, I know that there was a recent extension to, to this area, what, what, what do we know about kind of future plans? Have they been developed? They're in process?
Yeah, Anoka County's got a, a big say on that, and I think they're gonna be a little late to the game to get on, on border-to-border broadband grants. Uh, the state, uh, has put together monies, uh, between the governor's budget and the federal monies, about ninety-five million dollars for brought, border-to-border this year. But there's an August fourth deadline for that, so you have to have a, a very, very detailed and thorough application put in. We're currently working with a company called Arvig, to propose a border-to-border grant for a portion of the city that adjoins the two areas of the city they've already done. Uh, state's also come up with middle-mile monies, which is important, because a lot of area has, uh, unserved or underserved areas with no fiber anywhere close.
Mm-hmm.
So without that middle-mile money, there's no providers that want to come in. Comcast will come in, and over a period of years, do it for fourteen million dollars, which is a little tough to chew right now. Um, so we are looking at, uh, Harvig has volunteered to write up our grant for us, and we're gonna have a proposal yet this month for
Okay.
About eighty-plus homes, to try and get some of that state money to the other. In addition, there's a couple of federal programs that have just been released, that we're hoping to partner with in different parts of the city, but right now, there's, there's not a lot out here. With a large acreage, the last month providers aren't interested in, in eating a lot of that infrastructure.
Right, right.
Harvig will take, typically, thirty to forty percent
Okay.
Of that. It is, it is one of the biggest issues, uh, with people working from home, going from home, realtors, it's one of the detriments to bringing people out here.
Mm-hmm.
You've got half a million dollar home, and you don't have fiber, it's a tough.
Right. Well, I do want to be respectful of time, but thank, thank you so much, um, this, this was a real pleasure, um, and I, and I wish you all the best, I hope that you hire me, but even if you don't, I'm excited for you, I, I see a lot of potential here, and this is, this is a joy to, to get to know you.
Appreciate it, appreciate your enthusiasm for the
Thank you.
For government work, so.
Thank you.
We appreciate you coming out.
Yes, yes.
Hey, I'm getting used to the drive on thirty-five W.
What's the average speed? No, never.
I, I, I'm not gonna answer that.
You, you can say what miles or ways says it.
It's six hundred and fifty miles to my parents' house, and it usually takes me nine and a half hours. With stops, with stops.
Yeah.
Thanks, Zach. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, I'm not out of my ass, that's all, right?
Well, I'd, I'd out-of-range for that.
Nice to meet you.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you, Zach.
Thank you, sir.
Nice to meet you, Zach.
Thank you.
Yep. Oh, yeah. Well, we, yeah. Zach? One question we meant to ask.
Yeah.
Um, should you be chosen, what is your availability? How long a transition are you taking?
Um, you know, I, I do have to give two weeks, uh, to my current employer, and then I will, in transition time, will be here to, but I'm coming on to, to work with you guys on that.
Okay.
I am moving, so hopefully that's understood. Yeah. Thank you, thanks, man.
Thank you.
You want to go over?
Yeah.
No?
No, you've gotta do it in Anoka. If we were discussing negotiation of the contract, I think that would qualify, otherwise, it's still an open meeting. All right, so how much do we, uh, want to discuss at this point with three candidates to go? What, what, you were saying, obviously, we don't want to lose our momentum from what we have here, but I also don't want to bias the other three candidates that aren't in yet, so.
I mean, I would just, you know, get on some frozen counts.
Mr. Mayor?
Come, Ms. Rayna.
I found the, uh, little chart of candidate rating form to be, you know, good, and I've been filling it out as we go, simultaneous with the questions that are being made, and then the, um, the other rated form that says communication skills, clarity of ideas, innovative. So I think as long as we, uh, fill all these forms out simultaneous, uh, our notes should be able to carry us, and we make the best judgment we can on that little rating form. I mean, already with the, uh, with the RCAs that they filled out, uh, the work experience, education, you know, things like that, it's already given us quite amount of information in that little chart. Um, so I think that's been a great tool for me, um, so I kind of like the, the mayor's idea, if we discuss these candidates now, I don't know, I really think we should wait till the other three are done, and then we discuss them all together and look at our notes. I, that's just my opinion.
Yeah, and typically, we do have, you know, in most cases, it is one day, so this is a unique situation.
Especially when it's not back-to-back, I mean, we got two days in between. I think the, um, you know, when we were talking about this, too, the, the sheet, these are not necessarily hard, fast points where we say, okay, here's the, this is more to help us, say, here's how I would evaluate the materials we have, the interviews, that includes the video interviews, whatever you remember from that, but these interviews, the ideas we have here, um, again, looking at education relevant to what this position is, leadership experience, the RCAs, we have those things to evaluate with these answers here, to give us an idea of how we would evaluate the five, top to bottom, and then we'll have a discussion on Thursday night, saying, how does everybody else rate those same pieces of information? Again, um-
It's very, very hard, because there's, the, you, you're not comparing apples to apples, really. I mean, I, I'm sorry, but you, I thought they both had great interviews, and they're just nothing alike. Nothing! And yet, I would not put one down and say, oh, well, he, he just didn't have a great interview. And so, I, I don't know how you do this. I mean, to me, it's not, I even think experience, education, and interviews is, is minor, all of that.
I think that, that it's a testimony to the five finalists we picked, that it's gonna be a hard choice. I mean, I don't think, you know, i- if you had somebody who just bombed at the interview, you'd say, okay, that's, that's pretty obvious that they're not a good fit for us.
Yeah.
I think we've got five people that, that appear, we selected these because they appear to be a good fit, so it's gonna be a tough choice.
But it's, it's what we're looking for, that's, to me, the biggest
How do they fit here?
Yes, it's, I mean, I think that somebody really did all those hundred percent, but I don't maybe think they're the best fit for this city. Do you see what I'm saying? So it's tough. This is the tough thing. I'd like to recuse myself.
That's, that's where, so, so, I don't know if you guys called any of the, the contacts on some of these candidates that-
I did, I did.
One of the comments that one of them had said to me is, is a particular candidate, they would not recommend, but in the right situation, they could be great.
That's how I, that's exactly what I heard.
And, uh, you know, is this the right situation? It's kind of, each one of these, I think in the right situation, we've got five people that would do well. But is this the right situation?
And what are, and what are we looking for? And who, who is gonna blend? Th- this is not an easy place to come into, I'm sorry, but it isn't. So who can, who can come in? Frank did, did it, but who can come in and, and it hasn't been successful in the past, and you have been quite successful. So, I mean, uh, we have to think that through.
Well, I think Frank's opinion on this matter would be of vital importance, being that he sat in the chair for a long time.
There, there hasn't been much we haven't thrown at Frank.
No, and he, and he's figured out how to appease a variety of personalities, because you've got really a mismatch here.
You, you have a, a, quite a distinction between the, the rookie office staff and the vastly experienced public work staff, and then, then the contractors. We've got quite a mix, it's, it's not a, it's not a cookie-cutter job, so.
But it's because you fit, you fit the role of what, what certain council members really want, and that made a difference.
Well, the irony of your situation was a strength.
What?
It was a weakness, but it was a strength.
What was?
I think people generally like to get along, and we were having some troubles getting along for a while, I felt, I mean, from a guy looking from the outside, and yet, there's a strength, because I think truly, we, we do want to work together, and that's what I see you doing. I heard all the stuff about how you guys never agree to things. Well, take a look at your minutes.
Oh, my husband says the same thing. We agree at, we pretty much agree on anything that comes up in the council. I don't see that we have a lot of disagreements on, on things we're voting on. Do you, do you, anybody? Do you, Jason?
But if you can get an administrator who understands, in my estimation, understands that importance, and, and that you guys do want that, because that's quality leadership, and can give you that, more of that, I think you're, you're, you've taken some important first steps to get where you want to go.
I, I would like to say, too, I think one of the, the key things there has been your proactive communication. As Linda said, maybe a little too much sometimes.
Keep up.
I love that, actually, I love that.
I know, and that's what, what has been, that's been a really important thing for certain people on our, our, on our council, so you filled the gap there. That was huge. Mr. Mayor, and I, I agree with that, um, and I, I kind of touched on it in the questions for Zach, is that, um, some of the stuff that's coming from Frank should be coming from staff. So we get stuff on culverts, and this and that, that should be the public works person. We don't have, um, an incumbent that has, and I don't mean to be derogatory, but doesn't have that skillset of communicating, putting together everything in a memo, and a public works director should be doing that. And so we are getting more information from Frank, but it is information that should be coming from other staff. And so, again, a redo of looking at what our staffing should look at, look like, will help that, and, and that. The communication would still be coming, but it would be coming from a more appropriate person.
I, I think, but along those lines, I think that, that what I've seen is the transition of the expectations to all staff. Now, I know, when, when I'm in signing checks, and there's, I, I hear the questions, um, if I have a question, uh, it's already been asked, I went to the fire department, I went to the chief, I went to Eric, I went to Joe, whoever signed this, I went to them and said, where do you want this coded? What is this? So they get, you know, if I have a question on signing something, they've already gone and asked the question, they're, they're putting the responsibility where it always should have been. And, and I remember the first time that question was asked, it was on tire recycling, it was like, I don't know, well, this is your signature. Why don't you know why this is two dollars and this is five dollars? Because I just signed it, and it was just, was very clear, these are the expectations. And I think what Zach was saying there is, if you have clear expectations, then you can hold people accountable, you build relationships, you make sure you have clear expectations, then you can work as a team. And I've seen it, I've seen Frank sit down and, and say, here's, here's what I need from you, you know, whether it's seasonal workers, or whether, whatever it is. So I, I think that we, we're transitioning into that, and that expectation will grow as that you're developing this team, uh, and the accountability of that team. It, it will come to that, where we're getting reports from the right place. I would say, when it came up on dust control and some of those things, Frank doesn't know, he doesn't know our streets, but he went to Joe, and he asked, and Joe gave him good answers. So I think, you know, what I've seen is, is the expectation Frank's put on staff has had a good response. I mean, would you agree?
Well, absolutely. They may not be able to put it in the framework that you'd want to put in a newsletter, et cetera, but their information is accurate, they know what they're talking about.
Yes, they know their business.
Yep, and so, you love that.
Huge.
And, and it's got credibility with you guys. That's one of the most important things you can possibly have. Once you lose that, the game is over. You may as well go on to the next town.
So, so back to your point, Linda, that's, that's a key part of what we're looking for, is who can keep that going, building that relationship with staff, um, the accountability, showing them the respect that Frank adds, saying, here's what I expect you to do, and you're capable of doing that.
It's pretty hard to judge that until they get into the, into the work.
But that's where we gotta keep trying to ask, like, for real-life examples versus
Yes.
general statements, I mean, you really want the, here's the situation, here's the task, here's the action, here's the results, so that you can try to gauge on, has this person actually experienced this, or have they- this or have they demonstrated this trait that we're looking for? I mean, I think they're both candidates, but...
I appreciated your follow-up on, you know, where did you actually see this and what you do about it?
Well, you're never gonna have, you're never gonna have a thirty-some-year-old have experience like a fifty or sixty-year-old anyway. I mean, you know, that's life, but it's what we're looking for. What are we looking for? Someone who has that so that they come in and they know what they're doing like Frank? Or are we looking for someone that you can groom to be the way you feel like you want them to be?
Three to go.
I got an ultimate frisbee league I'm supposed to be running right now.
Mary, did you have something else you wanna say?
The frisbee threw me off.
I'm looking forward to Thursday, four o'clock.
All right. Thank you all.
Nothing else? I move to adjourn. I move to adjourn?
I don't know if it's rented tomorrow.
I second.
All of those documents, by the way, they become public eventually, so just watch what you're writing. You're watching what you're writing.
Let's just shred them when you get home.
Let's see, what week is this, Mary? Is there seniors?
No, the seniors are the next week and same with the Lions.
So we should be able to leave it set up?
We should be able to, Mary?
So we vote on adjourn?
All right. Got a motion to second to adjourn, all those in favor?
Aye.
Foes, motion carried, we are adjourned.
Thank you, Frank.
You're right. Who was the motion second?
Mary and Joel.
Thank you.